November meeting for Board of Supervisors, night meeting. Welcome everyone that's here. We have a call. Now you want to go into closed session?
No, I think you're saying about Mr. Reeves would like to attend by electronic meeting.
All right, I'm instructed to read. In accordance with our electronic meeting policy, Mr. Tim Reeves contacted the vice chairman and the county administrator yesterday to notify us that he would not, he would be unable to attend tonight's meeting because of personal health issue recovering at home from surgery. That will not allow Mr. Reeves to attend the meeting this evening. Mr. Reeves is participating from his home this evening by telephone. There is a quorum present in our normal meeting room this evening, and we will make arrangements for Mr. Reeves to participate remotely through the use of his speakerphone which can be heard by all persons at our normal meeting room. Participation is automatic unless any member wishes to disprove. Do I hear any disapproval? Hear none. I guess, Mr. Willis, you can read.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Chairman. I move that the With County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting to discuss the following, as permitted by Virginia Code 2.2, 3711A7, consultation with legal counsel regarding the Lamberson matter.
Okay. Second. All, all people say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Tim. Okay, we're out of closed session. Will you read this out, Mr. Willis?
Absolutely. Whereas the With County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provision of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712, Code of Virginia, requires a certification by the With County Board of Supervisors that such a meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved, the With County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in this closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the With County Board of Supervisors.
Thank you. We do a roll call vote on that one. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 Vice Sheriff, aye.
Mr. Reeves?
Say it.
Say it, or not, I will.
Mr. Reeves, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. Mr. Willis has read the resolution. Charlie has seconded the resolution of closed meeting. We'll call the vote again, Chairman.
All right. Mr. Reeves, I didn't know we'd lost you. Call the vote again. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right. You satisfied now. Okay. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, guys. The Chairman, if you want to recess until seven, DM?
Yeah, we're too early. It might be some other folks coming. So we'll be in recess for eighteen minutes and be back at seven. We have someone here other than what's on the docket. Jim Cox is going to give us the invocation. Mr. Cox, please.
Our Father, and our holy God, we thank you, Lord, each one of us, for the privilege of serving you in the varied capacities that we do. And tonight in this meeting, Father, we pray that nothing will be done or said that would dishonor you, but would be the best for the community in which we reside. So bless these men and women here, Father, that will be making decisions. Give them wisdom beyond compare. Everything for your honor and glory, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Seven oh five, we have an advertisement for a public hearing dealing with vacating a right-of-way, and I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Baer to explain the details where it is. Stephen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just to let everyone in the audience know, Chairman Tim Reeves was unable to be with us due to a medical situation. He is joining us by telephone under our electronic meeting policy, so he can hear us, and we should be able to hear him.
I can hear your vibes, David.
The, what we have before is a public hearing for the vacation of a right-of-way in the property of Max, in Max Meadows, property of Barry, near the property of Barry and Sherry They have proposed, similar to what a neighbor of theirs recently did here in the county, to vacate a public right-of-way located on 10th Street between Virginia Avenue and Cleveland Avenue, Denniston Avenue from Brock Avenue to Cleveland Avenue, Virginia Avenue from Lot Four, Section 51, to Lot Two, Section 42, and Flat Book One, Two, Plan C. The easiest way to look at it, there is a map on page nine of your agenda that shows the areas in blue to be, to be vacated. It's a blue hatched area that you see there. I will mention before we get started, the area on Eighth Street is shown to be vacated, is still intended to be vacated, as the original people that signed which, the letter to vacate this property, did not, did not have a couple of individuals that owned property there that had joined this. So the Eighth Street, Mr. Dickens has been working with those owners, Ms. Castle has been working with those owners. It's three ladies, I believe, is that correct? Two, two. And they are in the process of signing the letter to go forward with that. So as we move forward following the public hearing, I will have a couple of recommendations of how best to handle that situation. But at this time, Mr. Chairman, unless you all have any questions, I would recommend opening the public hearing.
Okay. We have one signed up. Is that right, Stephen?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Barry Dickens signed up to talk.
Well, I have no prepared remarks. I just want to thank you all for taking the time to consider the action that we're wanting to take on the property. The property, a section of the property, I've been a resident of for approximately twenty-two years. Prior to that, my grandparents owned the property. It's a five-acre section. Recently, due to the passing of a neighbor, I was, it was made available, the adjacent property and other approximately twelve acres there, and that, that put me on both sides of a, the Dennison section that's going from Brock to Cleveland Avenue. So it's just my goal to try to make all of my property into a, one area, makes it easier on my children when they have to deal with it later on in life. Also, I would like to remark on that Eighth Street section. When we first, when I first came up to talk to Mr. Baer about what needed to have happen there, I didn't get the full set, the full map of who owns what. So that's, that's the reasoning behind the fact that a couple of the ladies didn't get to sign. And we, actually going through the survey process, that's when the gentleman that was doing the survey chose, you know, or made the recommendation that we go ahead and try to close that one as well. I got a phone call three thirty today from a gentleman that is related to those two ladies, and one of them has had a stroke, and so that may really push things aside on that Eighth Street for some time. I don't really know what is going to be the, you know, status on that, but yeah, that's really all I have to say. I, again, appreciate you considering it, and...
Okay. Well, thank you. Stephen?
While he's on the treadmill, if I might, if, what I want to show you all what he's proposing to do is Martha will take that back up one page. You will see he is just taking it from all of those individual lots to converting this into one large tract of land, which gets rid of all those individual lots, and then he just has X acre tract of land. And that is desirable for us and him. He takes off all of those little bitty lots off there, and that is how he indicated he would like to proceed with it. So I just want to make certain everyone is aware of that. We appreciate him showing an interest in doing that. It takes a lot of bitty tax tickets off the road, and it makes one thing.
Well, that's what I wanted to clarify. We're only vacating those fifteen or twelve-foot alleys. Are we closing any of the main roads that will affect anybody else?
There are some of the roads that are in there, but he owns both sides of the roads. The adjoining owners and people that live down to it have been notified of this, but these are not roads that have ever been developed. They have been maintained by him or the previous owners for years.
Yeah, those are the ones that are not really in the state system.
Correct.
But they're those that are on the map, and have never been developed. Now, that, you're dealing with Dennison, right?
Yes, sir.
It's still going to stay a public road as far as it does. It does not go all the way down to 611.
No, correct. The part that the state maintains, Denniston Avenue and Cleveland Avenue, where they join is the eastern terminus of where his property is, and from there back to Brock is what's proposed to be vacated. It's never been developed.
How, how do we intend to designate where this validation occurs? The state road's going to stay where it is?
Yes.
Is it clearly that that's going to stay in the state system for those people that use that lower end?
Yes.
It's still not a very good road, but it's...
The plat that is prepared shows Denniston Avenue coming up. It shows Cleveland Avenue coming up. This does not affect any of that. It only shows the vacation of the property that he owns both sides of, that did not affect the state-maintained order.
Okay, and there's nothing beyond there. Is he owning all three sides of that road?
Through that section, he owns the north and the south section of it all the way to Brock Avenue.
Okay. Now last one, do we have any easements or need, ever need easements in there?
We have water and sewer, and it is not in any of these areas, the water and sewer along the roads that you were just speaking of, and also down along Virginia Avenue. With his converting this into the one tract, and this is a one large tract of land, no, there is not any needs. We did review that with Mr. Chris from the water and wastewater department. Does not affect any of our easements and no need for any easements.
Does sewer go up there?
Sewer does go up on the eastern side. If you'll go down one...
Yeah, the blue and the green, the blue, I think, is the water line, and the green is the sewer line that...
Basically, on your right-hand side, there, Martha, you've moved the mouse on, yeah, right up in there, the Cleveland, that, there's, there's a sewer line coming down through there, and a water line coming down and going up through there. And what he is talking about vacating is everything you see in the blue to the west.
But the reason I ask that, both of those are natural drainage off that hill, but you've determined we don't need them now or in the future.
We're not affecting those.
Okay. Any other questions? Tim, do you hear all that all right?
Yes, I already signed.
Okay. We've notified all the other adjacent landowners, and there's none here to speak? Okay. Closed public hearing. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, my recommendation on this ordinance at this time is to not, to not take action on, on this ordinance. If he is able to obtain the signature from the two ladies that, that are wanting to vacate a portion of Eighth Street, then the ordinance as written is acceptable, and this plat is acceptable. If they are not interested in closing that portion of Eighth Street, we will have this plat revised to take that part off of it, take Eighth Street off of the ordinance, and adopt it at the next meeting.
So you want to table it until, until the engineering's complete?
I just, yeah, I would not take any action on it at this point.
Okay. Any objections to that from the board? Hear none? That's how we handle it. Thank you. Next, we have citizens sign. Does anybody sign up for citizens sign? Is there anyone here that would like to, to speak at citizens sign? Okay, I'd like to take this opportunity. We have at least one of the supervisors-elect present. Mr. Lawson, do you have anything that you'd like to comment this time?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Good Lawson's not here. Okay. We'll go on to men's the last meeting.
Make the motion. We approve the men's as presumed.
Have a motion?
Say.
Second, is there any discussion of men's conditions or emissions? Anyone else ring up? Do you know who called for the vote? Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Payment of invoices.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we pay our invoices. Second.
Have a motion, second, to pay the invoices. Any that you want to take out, discuss, or highlight? Hear none? Call a roll call vote? Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right. Next, we have old business. Stephen, what do we have under old business?
Mr. Chairman, I do not have any matters to bring up under old business tonight.
Any member have any old business to ring up? Hear none? New business, Economic Development Committee report. Give me a minute. I know I've got it here somewhere. Economic Development Committee met on the ninth of November, authorized to make application for ACT Work Ready Communities. That's Mount Rogers driven, I think it's Mount Rogers, Stephen.
It's actually through our Workforce Development Group.
Right. So it's, it's a program, and it will let us help in economic and industrial development that we have a prepared workforce. The committee recommendation is that we go forward with this authorization. Need, not having, coming from committee doesn't need a second. Roll call vote? Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, the next one from the committee, and I wasn't there because of personal involvement. Chairman Reeves sat in on the committee meeting. The committee reviewed a proposal from Mr. Dan Tully of Branch Botanicals to release a $200,000 letter of credit in exchange for a, a lien against his personal property. Doesn't need a second. Do we have any discussion?
Well, that's just a statement. It's not a, is that a recommendation?
That did not come from the committee in the form of a recommendation. That just came from the committee to recommend the full board to bring this matter. If you'd like, Mr. Chairman, I'll give a brief overview, and on page sixty-seven of the agenda, we've got a short information about it.
So, all right, that sounds good. Give us an overview.
Mr. Tully, if you're with us, and I think you'd give him the opportunity to speak here in a minute, Branch Botanicals has an irrevocable letter of credit in the amount of $200,000 as a guarantee required by the With County Grant Performance Agreement between the county of With, the JIDA, and Branch Botanicals. Mr. Tully with Branch Botanicals is requesting that With County and the Joint Industrial Development Authority release this letter of credit in exchange for a deed of trust on properties that he owns in With County. Within the package, I did include a copy of the performance agreement between the Tobacco Commission, With County, and Branch Botanicals, and also a With County Grant Performance Agreement, which is the agreement in question that does require the $200,000. Also included with it is the irrevocable letter of credit, the purchase promissory note on the property, and that is a purchase promissory note on Lot Number Twenty that Branch purchased. There is a deed of trust on that property in the amount of $272,735, due and payable December first to the Joint Industrial Development Authority, and a deed of trust in the amount of $87,500 that is tied in on the same date as the performance agreement, which is dated 2020. Also included are the three land cards for Mr. Tully's properties. I have a map here just to show you these properties. I'll ask Mr. Tully to confirm if he thinks he's on. Show to these three first, and then show to the others. This is his...
Mr. Tully, would you come on up and be part of this?
Sure. This is his property. He has property here, here, and all of this amount of property here, which the land cards are in your... Property on Pepper's Ferry Road is the tract here, this tract that runs up here, and this tract up here, large mountain tract of property.
Where's Pepper's Ferry?
Pepper's Ferry Road is right down there, which is where it crosses the creek. Progress Park is up here, crosses the creek here, and starts coming out toward Magnette.
I've got a couple of questions, and I think some other board members may have some. Mr. Tully, how about showing us where the access is, and public access to Pepper's Ferry Road or the nearest state road?
For my property?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
Well, I have direct access...
Go ahead and hold it up there. It's hard on you being over like that.
I have direct access right here, but until, as long as I own the property, I have a right of transfer through my brother's property, which is right here. So I actually drive in the main gate and just come over.
Oh.
I haven't built a road onto Pepper's Ferry. I have the county approval, and I have the state approval for it.
Well, let me ask Stephen. Does he have a deed of easement?
He owns, I do not what he, I do not know what easement he has across his brother's property.
I have a deed of easement.
His, his property he owns does come all the way down and front on Pepper's Ferry Road.
Your property fronts?
My, my property fronts Pepper's Ferry. I did not put the, so, I front all the way to here. This is my house lot, so this is Pepper's Ferry, so I front right here on Pepper's Ferry, about fifteen, twenty-five feet from Goford's entrance.
That's Goford's, man, there's...
That's Goford's entrance here.
The big curve right there.
And then this is, I start here and come all the way up through here. I've got...
Okay, but that's part of your property, so you don't need a deed of access.
No, but, but I, I did one anyway, just so that I didn't have to put in a road right now.
In that curve.
Right.
And that, all that property's contiguous?
It goes contiguous back to here.
Yeah. There, there's two tracks there. The northern track is a 281C, I believe is the number on it.
Yeah.
And it is, it...
This one.
It is a landlocked parcel by itself. It does not front on the road. The one that's south of it, 281D, I believe it is...
Is this one.
That runs, and it has a dogleg fifty-foot strip, I believe it is, runs off of it down.
Is that yours or your brother's?
No. I own this, this way, and this way. So my brother is contained within my footprint. He fronts Pepper's Ferry for a mile, and then I have, this is my main access into Pepper's Ferry.
But my question, is that, that northwest corner right here, moving, turning it down, is that yours or your brother's?
Mine.
Okay.
This, 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 and this.
This piece here is all one piece.
Okay, and it joins without reservation the back piece?
Correct. Right.
And you're proposing both of those?
Yeah.
That makes up the number of acres?
Yes.
Okay, I understand. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Any other deed of course on that line?
No.
No, I checked, I checked for liens. There's no lien between them.
Well, Mr. Vice Chairman, I'm not on Economic Development Committee, but, Mr. Tully, what advantage does this give you? I mean, why, I, I guess I'm, I'm just asking why.
So, so we were given the grant to help move the company forward. The way the letter of credit is currently written, the entire grant money sits in the bank in a locked account, so we have no ability to use that to accelerate some of the work we need. So by putting the property up, I can get the money actually released from the bank. So the letter of credit that we had to get from the bank, the bank provided with a $200,000 secured deposit, which effectively meant I...
That's locking you up.
It's locking me up. I can't use it. And this is offering a piece of property worth about double that, so that we can pull the money out and make some expenditures. As you all know, we have a season that we want to be in, and it, you know, if you miss some of the, the seasonal opportunity, then it's hard to get that investor. Last year, we came in, we were ready for the seasonal. We expected to get through EPA pretty quickly. It was about ten months, which had us miss that season, lost a couple of investors, found a couple more. We're trying to, you know, to move forward as quickly as we can with some of this year's requirements.
Well, so if this, if, if this is approved tonight, then what, what you're, what are your next steps?
Well, I'll get with the lawyer and make sure we get the transfers over, and then we have a number of things that we're moving out, purchasing for Branch.
We, we would need to amend the performance agreement, because the performance agreement identifies what the security is for the tobacco money, so we'd need to amend that performance agreement for that purpose, and then we would need to draft a deed of trust where he's securing that commitment with his land. I'm not sure I would need a note, but I think the performance agreement would do it with the deed of trust.
Mr. Tully, you paying for that?
Yes.
You're paying that, county's not paying for legal services.
I would think so. I mean, I'm requesting the change.
I would too, and I like that a lot, but...
I, I'm requesting the change, not the county, so I think it's, I think it's fair.
Well, in fairness, we're giving up an amount of liquid, but we're getting more security.
Right.
So that's what makes it more palatable, but if there's any legal fees involved, including accreditation or attorney's fees, I think I'm going to act like a banker here if I don't keep pay for it.
I think that's a reasonable request.
You have any problem with that, Stephen?
Yes, sir.
Anyone else have come in about economics? Has y'all all right with that?
Aye.
All right. How long... How long we're going to give him to pay his money back?
That money's not required to be paid back if he meets the performance agreement. This is money he got from the Tobacco Commission for his project, for Branch Botanicals' project, and if they meet the investment goals and the job goals, then that money's not... Does not have to be paid back.
So this is sort of a quick quote-type thing?
No, it's more than that.
It's security for us, because if he doesn't meet his performance goals, then the Tobacco Commission wants that money repaid, and With County's on the hook to repay that money. So we just want security from the company saying, if we have to pay it back...
But we're trading... We're trading the... Or releasing a letter of credit for the...
For the land.
Right. Okay.
It's just not as liquid. We would have to go through foreclosure process and all that, should they not meet performance goals.
But it will allow you to move forward in With County?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Gary, also, I think it's public comment for million. This is With County assurance that we've always practiced, so we don't have an mathematics problem, or we don't have some other problems that states had in funding projects. We're not going to get a hold of the bag, because With County's always required these kinds of securities.
I understand. I think With County's is protected. Yeah. If we make the switch, it's as protected, you know, than we are now. So I mean, I don't... On the surface of it, unless there's something I don't understand, I don't have a problem.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, my recommendation would be, if you wanted to move forward with it, I would recommend that you request the county attorney to draft an amendment to the performance agreement and begin drafting the necessary deed of trust on the property. Execute this at our next meeting.
Add one more line at Mr. Tully's expense.
Can we go faster than the next meeting?
No. Thanksgiving's next week. I don't think I can get it before.
Okay. And your next meeting is...
The board has to approve the documents, too. They need to approve the amendment to the performance agreement.
All right.
So they can't do that unless they have a meeting, which is November 28th.
November 28th.
Yeah.
Does that create some unusual problem for you?
I would like to get it released sooner than that, but if the 28th's what we can do, as long as we can release then, then we can make that happen. I'll just have to schedule with you and schedule with the bank.
All right. Any other comments? Somebody called... We're not calling quick.
Need a motion there.
A motion. Well, Economic Development, I'm going to go back here. First line here is Economic Development recommend the... Made the following recommendation. So we really need the motion to follow their recommendation.
There was not a motion in the second and a vote taken in that meeting, so that is why we're requesting the motion.
Because this just says that they reviewed it, so...
Okay. I would make that motion. I'll say it.
Dr. Housman made the motion, and Mr. Willis seconded. Any other comments or discussion? Here and now, call for the vote. Dr. Housman?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay.
What time is that meeting?
Tuesday, 9:00 AM.
Tuesday, 9:00 AM. Thank you. I just wanted to put it in. Thank you.
Excuse me. Stephen, in the paper, it was advertised at 7:00 PM.
No, that is our regular meeting. We have a public hearing at 7:00 PM that night that we will be coming back for.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. The next one is a report by the Construction Committee, Regional Exposition Center. I get... Have you got that, Stephen? Or have I got it?
I don't know if Mr. Mark or Tully...
I don't think we've got anything.
Mr. Willis, would you mind... Because he's asking the chairman to read in that one.
Take me a minute to find it.
Page 109.
Still taking a minute.
Charlie?
Mr. Willis.
Give it to him.
That we got. Without further delay, Mr. Chairman, the Appalachian Regional Exposition Center Construction Committee met on November the 8th and recommends the following. The first, acceptance of Baker Construction Services Incorporated change order number 1-8 in the amount of $3,157.50 for extension of the Phase 1 DV-4 concrete ditch.
You've heard the motion. That is a motion coming from committee. I think the public would like a little bit more explanation. Stephen, can you do that? Why the ditch? Built... Mr. Vaughn's here, let him do it. How much concrete? Why it happened? As an add-on. I only like credit changeovers, because I don't like debit credit changeovers.
In the original design, it was like 70 feet of concrete ditch on a very steep slope. So in order to prevent erosion down the ditch from the flow down upon number 1, next to Chapman Road, we needed to increase the amount of concrete in that section to prevent erosion. And during the big storm, 3.3 inches, that section held and performed well. And the contractor said, if we did not have put that concrete ditch in there, we would have had a failure at that location.
So it's an extension after the fact that it was a designed ditch, and you only extended it to really do its job?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Here and none, I'll get you out of the way first, all favor. Mr. Housman? Nope?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Okay. It's 6-1, carries basic change order. Is there anything else in that report at this time?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Got one more for you. Number two is acceptance of the proposal from Frailing &amp; Robertson Incorporated for inspection and testing services related to the construction of the Appalachian Regional Exposition Center Arena Building on an as-directed basis with a total cost not to exceed $35,000.
Comment on that is as-directed by Mr. Vaughn or project management. You've heard the motion. Any discussion on that one? Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 No. All right. 6-1, motion carries. Moving on to the next item is budget amendment to Commonwealth's Attorney.
Mr. Chairman, I request this amendment appropriation of $1,141. The Commonwealth's Attorney's Office purchased and received a computer last year. The invoice was either not received by their office or not submitted and was not paid, and as everything was wiped out in the last fiscal year, it would have been paid or the purchase order for it last year. Women came aware of it, and I spoke with Mr. May about it, and request amendment appropriation of this amount in order for him to pay that invoice.
Need a motion for that one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Mr. McRoberts made the motion. You seconded. Seconded, Charlie. Is there any other discussion? Here and none. Dr. Housman?
Aye.
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 Okay. And now it's 7-4. Moving on.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, is proposal from Webster Day Spillman Thomason Battle. They will be handling the bond council for us for our $7 million issuance. VACO being now, you all remembered the last meeting, you all voted for them to proceed with the financing proposals. Mr. Grant and I will be meeting with them tomorrow, reviewing their proposals, what's coming in. Request approval of this agreement with Webster Day to serve as bond counsel for us on this matter.
Yeah, that's only to hire them to be the bond counsel.
That's Webster Day, the bond counsel. Yes, sir.
Have a motion, black one?
I'll make that motion.
Does that one need a vote?
Needs a second of vote. Yes, sir.
All right. Second.
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, is the memorandum of understanding for septic sewage service for Pepper's Ferry Road wastewater treatment plant in Radford. This is an annual agreement that we have executed with them and recommend the approval of this agreement for fiscal year 2018... Or for calendar year 2018, excuse me.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion?
It's just the same thing we do year after year.
Yes, sir.
That's why I wanted to ask a question about it, Stephen. This has gone on year after year. With that headworks job, it's going to change after this year. Is that correct?
That's one of the things we have in that headworks job, is for us to live and in place to take septic.
Yeah, we start taking our own septic, and whether there's a charge or not for local septic is something for the Water and Sewer Committee. All right. Okay. All in favor? Oh, we got to do it. Broke off. Dr. Horni...
It's me. Ah.
All right.
Aye.
Next one's Mount Rogers Health District Local Government Agreement.
Just our annual agreement with the Health Department. I think Dr. Housman asked last year, it was December before they got it to be adopted. We actually got it in November this year, from July 1st. It's a little ahead of schedule, but recommend adoption of the agreement. The amounts are correct, and are what the board agreed to fund in this year's fiscal budget. So recommend adoption of the local government agreement and authorization signed.
The motion is second.
So move.
Charlie made the motion, green. Second. Any discussion? Here and none. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 Carries 7-0. Your next one?
Next item is Gov. Deals Vehicle Sale, and I will defer to the clerk of the board.
Do you need the auctioning book to be forwarded to the local people? I'm sure you can clarify in the surplus and second vehicle.
Okay. Have a recommendation, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion is second to accept the Gov. Deals sale and surplus equipment. Any other discussion? Here and none. Dr. Housman?
Aye.
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 Carries 6-0. Mark, I'm glad he didn't reduce you to used car salesman.
I would compliment Mark. How much have you sold on Gov. Deals? Is it over a million dollars?
About $400,000.
$400,000. Okay. It has worked well. It has been a very good tool to sell surplus and excess vehicles. I think the salesman I talked to at the conference indicated we may be up over a million dollars. I think you do the picture.
Stephen, do you want to hype or advertise that place, the Regional Expo Center groundbreaking ceremony? Give us an overview of what's going to happen there. It's hot more rain.
Yeah, the weather looks great. I appreciate Mark McCollum's helping to get that organized for us, but the groundbreaking will be at 1:00 PM at the Expo Center site. We have members of the board supervisors speaking, authorities speaking, and also representatives from the Tobacco Commission will be there, speaking on behalf of the funds that they have given to the Expo Center. Hopefully, we will have the good weather that has been called for and a good turnout. That is Friday. It's Friday at 1:00 PM.
I noticed I wasn't asked to speak. Well, you can have the first part. Under other, I've got a pleasure here. Mr. Horni?
I didn't do it, whatever it was.
Well, please stand up. I've been asked by the Virginia Association of Counties Supervisor Service Board. VACO recognizes B.G. Horni Jr. with County for 10 years of dedicated service to county government, signed by President Mary Biggs and Dean Lynch, executive secretary. Put that on your wall.
Hang on one second. I'm going to get a picture of you all going up since Mr. Farley's not being here tonight.
Tell us when you're ready.
Mr. Farley would already be done.
Yeah, he's done. Took this a long time ago.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Is there any other business come before the board?
Mr. Chairman? I have a letter that has been placed before you. Ms. Quinn, our treasurer, is here with us. Her letter respectfully requests the consideration of extending to 2017 real estate, personal and personal property tax deadline. The board may do so by resolution. There is a draft resolution in front of you. Ms. Quinn, I don't know if you have any comments?
Um, I've really... We've worked really hard to get tax bills out, so it's taken us a little bit more time, but we're learning the system, so I expect it to take more time. It's taken more time than I really anticipated. We sent bills to our printers last week. They've just started arriving back in the county between Monday and today. Seems to be that the timeframe that everybody's getting them. With that being said, over the three days, we've collected $283,000. So our taxpayers, those that get their bills as soon as they receive them, they're coming in and paying, but I feel like that's really good for the first three days, considering we are late in what I call the tax season. State code, Virginia code, does allow the board, governing body, to extend the due date for taxes within a reasonable amount of time, but not to exceed 90 days. As of today, we are 20 days from the due date, so we're really only giving our taxpayers three weeks to pay. We've had a lot of comments from people, because we are on such a short timeframe of them paying. A lot of people need to plan ahead of time, though as taxpayers, we all know, we're receiving that bill every year, but a lot of folks do not realize that. So with an effort based on the December 5th due date, starting today, I've extended our office hours. We're open to six each day, with the exception of around Thanksgiving, which we close next Wednesday at noon. We'll be closed Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving, and then on Saturday, December the 2nd, we will be open from 8:30 to noon that day. I would like for you gentlemen to consider, at a minimum, a 10-day extension, which would put the due date to December the 15th. I would recommend no more than a 30-day extension, which would push it out to January the 5th. Our taxpayers are accustomed to getting their bills in early October, mid-October, so normally they have 45 to 60 days to plan and pay their tax bills, and I think we do need to allow them more time, because we are on a three-week timeframe, but that decision can only be made by you gentlemen as far as being the governing body. As the treasurer, I'm only required to send tax bills out 14 days before the deadline. I have met my end of the deal, so I'm now asking you guys to make a deal in essence as far as extending the due date, if you would consider doing that. 10 days, as I said, would put it to December 15th. 20 days puts it to December 25th, which we are closed because of Christmas. 30 days, as I mentioned, does go to January 5th, but I think an additional 10 days would 30 days, as I mentioned, does go to January 5th, but I think an additional 10 days would give a lot more time. We've caught a lot of flack at this point, but we're just trying to assure people as best we can, so if the due date is extended, I would like to work with Mr. Farley. Is he, I guess he's in the rest of this week, but work with him, by him being the PIO at this point, and try to get media information out there, as far as the newspaper, maybe even work with Millie tonight or in the morning to get a newspaper article out, get it on Facebook, the radio, everywhere, so people know that we have extended, if that's what you choose to do.
I have a question, Laura. What is, if we extend it to the 15th, what is the penalty amount that triggers on the 16th? What percentage is the penalty?
The first day after the due date, regardless of when it is, there's a 5% penalty, and 10% annual interest begins to accumulate, but that's not a full 10%, because it's 1/12 of 10% that adds on each month. So, you know, you would have that difference. The one thing would be is making folks very aware, this is for this year only, that if it's extended out, you cannot come in on December, whatever day of next year, and pay and still be considered on time. This is a one-time, one-time thing for 2017 tax year.
Also, ought to be clear that by the extension, the penalty still kicks on?
Yes.
The next morning after the due date?
Yes, it will. It will. It's just basically giving an additional grace period, in essence.
Well, it's definitely a benefit to taxpayers that's not required by statute, but might certainly be the right thing to do.
And 90 days by far is not needed. There's no need to go that far, because that puts us up into April, and we don't need to do that, but at the most, I would say 30 days, but no less than a 10-day extension.
Laura, you said normally, they go out about the middle of October, middle of November now, so we're talking about basically four weeks, which is 20 working days. Why not 20 days instead of 10?
I'm open, you all make the decision. I'm just requesting no less than 10, no more than 30. It's my recommendation.
But if it were 20 days, I mean, it doesn't mess you all up any more than?
It doesn't. As I said, I've extended hours, offering Saturday hours, things like that, so we'll kind of, we'll keep that in place. I'm going to keep that in place at this point, so we'll continue to see how things progress, as far as people coming in, different things like that, and look at extending even later to whatever date.
If we did it 20 days, that would give them the same amount of time that they would
Almost another third week, yes.
have had.
My only comment on it, I would not recommend changing it to Christmas Day.
Oh, I understand.
Yeah, I was going to say.
No, 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 yes.
Because we're out.
I would love if we changed it to that, you know, I mean, it's only right that she's open to collect her taxes.
No, you know, I mean, you know, before that.
December 22nd would be the Friday before that, so that's basically 17 days that you would be extended.
What is the schedule on the 22nd? Because I honestly did not look at that before I left, because I can't remember if that's already a half a day or not. Did any of you all know right off? I didn't look. I'm thinking it is.
If they were 30 days late going out, why not just extend it 30 days to January the 5th?
Well, they weren't 30 days, were they?
Well.
They're not, I want to make certain we're clear.
Not really late.
They're later than they normally are. They are not late going in.
Right.
Yeah.
And I think, yeah, we understand.
And last year, I think it was mid-October, or closer to mid-October, before we were able to get the taxes out, so in co-in time of Mr. Lester's comment, you know, we probably are a month later than what we were last year.
To Mr. Lester's comment on the 5th, the advantage of the 5th gives you, the Christmas week is two days off, the first week of the year is two days off, so really, by going to January 5th, it's really only six more days on there, because the office is going to be closed until before those 10 break.
I caution you about making them due in 2018 with some pending tax law changes. They may not be able to deduct them in 18 versus 17, so people need to be real careful with that.
They're not supposed to, but in my previous experience at my former employer, you received a lot of checks, January 1st through the 5th, that were December dates.
Imagine that.
I think the decision for the board is, if you want to extend the date, by resolution, it can be done. There's a draft resolution. The one that's in front of you says December 15th to be extended to. You can certainly change that to whichever date you would like in the process.
And that's the only thing we'd have to change, is that date?
Yeah, I think that's true. I've got one in my hand that says January 5th, because after I talked to Lori, and she said she'd like maybe 30 days, I just drafted one, but that's the only thing. If you want to make it December 29th, which is the last Friday in December, we could just put that date on the resolution.
I'm good with that one.
Okay, everyone understands the proposal, and I agree with Mr. Willis. We shouldn't gamble on whether that deduction is going to be available for people. Any other comments?
And this is for 2017 only, so we have to make sure we stress that.
Mr. Willis, you're saying the 29th?
29th.
29th? I'm okay with that.
I would request somebody read the resolution then, make a motion about the resolution, read that resolution.
Yeah, add the 29th in there, please read the resolution.
Getting a lot of reading in tonight. All right. Whereas the 2017 real estate and personal property taxes are due on December 5th, 2017, and whereas the 27 real estate and personal property tax bills have been mailed to taxpayers in compliance with Statute 58.13912, and whereas the 2017 real estate and personal property tax bills have been mailed to taxpayers later than in previous years due to consideration to a new software system, and whereas the treasurer and the With County Board of Supervisors desire to extend the due date for payment of 2017 only real estate and personal property taxes as set forth in Section 58.13916. Now, therefore being resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors assemble this 15th day of November 2017, extend the due date for payment of 2017 real estate and personal property taxes until December 29th, 2017. Resolution adopted, if we do it tonight.
I will second the adoption of that resolution. I'm assuming that was the motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Mr. Willis made a motion, Dr. Houseman, a second, to move the property taxes for 20,000, or 2017 only, to December 29th. Any other discussion?
Or you'll have to do a good PR job to make sure everybody knows it's one year.
I'm sure Facebook will take care of a lot of that.
Facebook takes care of a lot.
It does, yes, sir.
You get a lot of yours across the counter. People actually come in and pay, don't they?
Oh, yes.
So just put up a card down there and say, this is one chance you're getting a break, don't count on it happening again.
That's how we know when tax bills will be back, because a lot of folks, we seen them on Monday with real estate payments. They got their vehicle taxes today for personal property, and they came back today, which, as people were coming in, we were offering for them to go ahead and pay personal property. We were giving them the amounts, asked if they'd like to go ahead and pay, to save them a trip back. And a lot of times, they were in a shorter line than what they ended up being later. So, we were able to help out a lot of folks like that. A lot of people have been calling, even leading up to taxes going to the printers last week, so we would give them amounts, we would offer for them to pay. So, we've tried to progressively work toward it, but we still catch the flack that I'm sure you gentlemen do as well, of it not being extended, so, and being on a short timeframe.
Mr. Lester, I'll call for a question.
Thank you. I have called for a question, all in favor of Mr. Horni?
Ah.
All right.
Ah.
Ah.
Ah. Ah.
Okay, carries, I'll set seven zero.
Thank you, gentlemen. On behalf of the taxpayers and citizens of With County, I know they appreciate it as well, so we'll see what that additional extension does for us.
May I ask one other question?
Sure.
And I'm not sure about this. When are we supposed to be able to pay taxes online? Will it be by next year?
Currently, when I say "we" is in the county, we're in the process of adding the utility billing system onboard with the Tyler Muna system, so with that, I think they're planning on being live with it by July 1st.
Okay, that's what, July 28th?
So, by the time that comes on live somewhere in that timeframe, you will be able to pay your utility bill and your taxes online, which, there will be a charge to do that, because our bank only allows us to collect the credit card payments through the office. So if you choose to pay online, you will have to pay a convenience fee, which is currently the same thing that's being offered now, because folks can make a payment online, but there's a 2.95% fee. And what it is, is we're having to use a third-party provider to provide that credit card service online. So you'll be able to look up your bill, you'll see that you owe $500. If you choose to pay it from that screen, you will be assessed a convenience fee.
But I'm not talking about paying online with a credit card. I'm talking about, you know, electronic banking.
Oh, with that, my understanding, as well as we progress with utility billing, and we're able to pull more of this onboard, hopefully, we can get that going. There's a lot of features with our tax system right now that we have not had the opportunity yet to take advantage of, because we've been trying to get everything ready for the tax bills for the tax season.
You're doing the basics right now, yeah.
Yes. So, there's a lot more for us to build on, it's just we have to get there to be able to build on it, so hopefully, that will come, I'm hoping, by next tax season as well. But, I don't know, I'm kind of, have to take it as it comes. So, anything else for me tonight?
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Do they want to have anything else under other?
I do, I would, a couple meetings ago, I suggested this, and it was just a suggestion, and through lack of foresight, I didn't make it as a motion, but I would like, you know, to make a motion that we advertise, you know, we have a public hearing next, you know, our next meeting on November the 28th. I recommend that we advertise that public hearing on the Everbridge system. It's one of the things that we, that we got it, got it for, and, you know, I don't see why we can't use it.
Just be careful, I'm agreeing with you here.
Okay, well, it is getting scary now, but I don't know what it takes to do that, but I would think, one of the complaints that we always have is that people don't know about, you know, about public hearings, or the public hearing will be over, and they, you know, and they won't. So, I make the motion that if it is technologically possible that we begin advertising public hearings through the Everbridge system, starting with the one on November the 28th.
We don't pay any extra for how many times we're used. As I understand it, you just, you do the message, and you hit the right buttons, and it goes to all the landline phones and some of the cell phones. You want to make that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that as a motion. Okay.
They have a motion, a second, to start utilizing the Everbridge system to advertise public hearings. Mr. Horni, second. Any other discussion? Stephen? Okay, here none. All in favor?
Ah.
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 Tim?
Ah.
All right, carries, seven zero.
Mr. Chairman, I do have two additional items, Miss Collins, remember, thanks to VDOT. Previously, you all had a draft, adopted a resolution for the Grouse Ridge Road project. We got a clarification on it, a request that we make a minor change. Mr. Bond, it's not really any make a change at all, we can find, but we have that, so I would request adoption of the Grouse Ridge Road resolution, and also adoption of the Ready Mixed Road resolution.
Well, on the Grouse Ridge, what is the real meat of the change? What's changed?
From early, sir, if you look at the top, there's a blank in there for who makes the motion, who seconds, and what the vote is.
The numbers were all the same, everything was the same. It basically, they just sent it back and asked us to change the format. Nothing substantial, it basically just changed the, therefore.
When you told me where it come from, I totally understand.
That piece of information would normally be in the board minutes, now they want it included on the actual resolution.
Okay.
I will have this Collins, or this Drew, and we'll put the correct resolution numbers in here to go with it. Request adoption of both resolutions.
Okay, we're familiar with one on Grouse Ridge, but we haven't previously done one on Ready Mixed.
No, we have not previously done one on Ready Mixed.
All right, let's get Grouse Ridge out of the way, instead of doing these together. Do I hear a motion that we change this language, so we'll have someone recorded that made the motion?
I'll make it motion.
I'll second it.
Second.
All right, any discussion, other than that we've made a motion? Here none, all in favor? No, got to call roll. Mr. Horni?
Ah.
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 Let's take care of the VDOT attorney. Now, let's talk about what's happening with this resolution that we haven't seen before. You want to give us a thumbnail of that?
The Ready Mixed Road project resolution is, been working with VDOT on bringing that road up into the state system, met with them several times on site. Basically, this is a revenue-sharing application to, basically do an overlay of that road, particularly on the southern, northern half of that road, where in between the truck stop areas that needs that. So this is a application of $127,000 of revenue-sharing application money. Half would be 63509 of the county, and the other half VDOT. In the interim, I am also working with VDOT under recreational access program, seeing if this road is eligible for the recreational access program. And if so, we will proceed on the recreational access program and not under the revenue-sharing, but it is necessary, if we even want to be considered for revenue-sharing, should the recreational access not be available, that we go ahead and make this application and adopt this resolution.
Since I intend to discuss this, do I need to ask Mr. Willis to take the chair? Okay, let's talk about it. Where does it start, where does it stop, for this amount of money?
This starts at the Chapman Road, and extends all the way up to right at the entrance, at the entrance for the Apex Center.
Will they do us a cut out there, Mr. Bond? Will they go ahead and take care of that turn like they normally do for a driveway?
They will need a T-turnaround at the end of this, as opposed to making a cul-de-sac.
Right.
And that was the, one of the questions that they asked, was, would any opposition to that T-turnaround been the entrance to the expo site? And I did not, I didn't get it, I did not see that being an issue with that being the turnaround location, because that would start the first part of the road down our property.
So they will take it in and make that T, so a 50-plus rig can turn around up there? Now, the other question is down there at the beginning, if we talk always, beginning at Chapman Road, will they take care, for this amount of money, the curb, gutter signage, and full width to the 60 feet?
For what's here, this does not include all the curb and gutter, gutter, gutter down through there. It does just include the overlay and getting this into the state, I think, because there would be some of the curb along, further on the backside of the property there, that's actually probably would have to come out in this process. that's actually probably would have to come out in this process, because it is well within that 60-foot area.
Right, but right now, we're going to get 60 feet of pavement, right?
It would be paved along the existing road where it is, and the width of it there. But that is not fully 60 feet in all areas through there, no.
Well, do we really want to do this right now, other than getting them to take it in? If we go in and put down new plank mix, knowing that the curbs are not right, and we've got, we have to have cutouts to accommodate Safeway and the Happy Store, is what I call it, and we need signage. Can all that be wrapped into one effort, or do you think we can get them to adopt it, and then someday get them to come back and do the work that really needs to get done?
We can, my recommendation would be proceeding with this application to get this into the state maintenance road system as it is. This still may not fly. There's still working it through, but there may be drainage issues that come out of this. And if they go back into drainage issues, the cost of this greatly increases dramatically for them to go into that. From a cost perspective, I think it is advantageous for us to go on to this with revenue-sharing to get this up there. Originally, we have been talking a long time, in my understanding, talking about no cost rule addition to do. That is not an available option on this route.
If I may, this, with the smart scale application process, the application was due November 1st, with the caveat that the board resolution to this effect will be due December 1st. So we have a placeholder that has been submitted to the Tyler Munich Department right now. If you don't pass this resolution, it will not be into the system, and it will essentially drop the project out of the 2019-20 revenue-sharing program. So it's placeholder, if anything else, right now.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Who's sharing the revenue on the local end?
The revenue-sharing would have to be a joint effort between us and the owners down there that have joined this property.
And they are in favor?
They have not, we have not gone that path with them. This came up right at when the deadline was due. Now, the application can go in, and we do not have to proceed with this and accept it in the process. This is like, we've done this on Olive Lane and some of the other revenue-sharing roads, where we have permitted, submitted our application, but then if the districts did not form, or the money was not there to do so, we simply did not accept that revenue-sharing project in that fashion. So this, and we're fine, we, I had Mr. Bone put it in quickly to get it in by the deadline for discussion. If we don't put it in, then we know revenue-sharing is out until we apply next November for revenue-sharing. So I understand Mr. Ellis's questions. I have met with them out there. We've talked about the curbs that are out there. We've talked about the drainage that is out there. This, this following their review, and they think the drainage could be addressed, what's there, this was the cost estimate that VDOT came back from.
Okay. I understand setting the funds, but did they indicate in y'all's meetings that it's going to be 19 before they do the work?
It's actually 18, 19, 18, 19, application, yes, not 19, 20.
Okay, so if it goes, it could be done before we get the building open.
I would have to confirm with them on their timeframe, but they would be doing this with local forces as it is, so yes.
Okay. Last thing I've discussed with you, and I guess it would be our obligation if they won't do it, we need to get no parking signs out there, get the Sheriff's Department to enforce them. Those big rigs come in there and park in the road, because there's nothing to tell them not to park in the road. And, you know, I go up there several times a week, and even our local delivery trucks pull up in the road and put their tailgate down, and that's got to stop, as there's more traffic. Those trucks, because it's going where the police department should be, coming out there because somebody's got a public road blocked. So I believe if we put up signs now, and get them used to the fact that you're not supposed to park in the middle of the road, it might be less problem once we get more traffic on that road. So I understand the money issue, and also what we heard, a tobacco issue, and I think y'all heard it too, they say there is no six-year plan now, that everything's going to be evaluated under smart scale. Did you hear?
And the other thing is, with the funds available for revenue-sharing, you're not even guaranteed your project will be funded.
No, no, no. Any other discussion? Here none, do we have a motion?
Some of it.
We have a motion by Mr. Lester to proceed with this request for revenue-sharing slot. Both second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Mr. Willis, to go forward with the slot to give in the revenue-sharing budget. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 No.
Aye.
Okay. 6, 4, 1 against Carrie. Now, is that the other two things you had, Stephen?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's all the business that I have for the evening.
Encourage everybody that can to be there to support the groundbreaking on Friday at 1 o'clock. If there's no other business coming forward, board, we are adjourned.